Evaluate and make decisions for the best of this city. And we bring before you the people that have our city, the decision maker of our city to give them knowledge. So that they may just make the best choices for all of our citizens and all of our businesses. And we ask you to keep our military in your arms and keep them safe as we ever travel overseas. And wrap your arms around their loved ones that are waiting for them at home. We ask you to keep your, our first responders safe. And we ask all this in your name, Jesus Christ.
Thank you.
Amen.
Right, thank you very much, commissioners. I just want to make note that Commissioner Reyna and Commissioner Hepworth are joining us online. And Commissioner Stimson is excused tonight. We'll go ahead to agenda item number three. Have we had a chance to look through the minutes?
She made the one change already that I was going to mention, so.
Alright. What was that change? And we'll just, she already made a change to this?
Yes, he was excused. Commissioner Reed was excused and not absent.
Alright, with that addendum to the minutes, that was already corrected. Any other changes or corrections?
I move to approve the minutes.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Did we get two ayes online? Which one?
We don't have the monitors on.
Yeah.
This is Dustin, aye.
Okay, and then we got Andrew?
Aye.
Okay, perfect. Alright, minutes are approved. Okay, move on to agenda item number four. Elica, do you have anything to report from the city council?
Nope, I don't. No, last time it was all site plans and those don't go to city council.
Okay. Alright, moving on to agenda item number five. Discussion and action on a preliminary site plan for a landscape retail yard. Site plan approval for landscape retail yard approximately 2797 South 1900 West. Greystone Products. Do we have someone here to represent this item? If you'll just step up to the podium, say your name and address, please.
Cody Taylor, 5014 South 1100 East, South Ogden, Utah. Move the mic over.
Okay, just tell us a little bit about what your plans are and explain it.
So the plans are just to have a landscape yard with all of the materials and stuff that people can pull in, pick up in their pickup trucks and load up and take out. Is basically what it is.
Alrighty. Still pulling mine up here. You guys have questions for Mr. Taylor?
Could we have, Elica, could you please review the ordinance and what's allowed in there again? I want to make sure I'm 100% got this right.
You mean for the usage?
Yes.
Yeah, so let me pull up that staff report. So this would fall under building materials, like a sales yard. And so this property is zoned M1. And so that is conditional under C3. And anything that's conditional under C3 is conditional under M1.
Thank you.
So to clarify then, that if we wanted to approve this as a conditional use, then how would we state that in the, in the motion?
You would just say, I motion to grant conditional use of this. So just before, so to grant conditional use of this preliminary site plan. And then everything else would stay the same.
Thank you.
Any questions, concerns? I know this is a pretty simple site.
So there's already products there on that lot and we're just expanding it, or?
No, it's a, it's a brand new lot. It's just a vacant field right now.
Yeah.
Weeds.
Weeds, yeah. They're cleaning it up, if anything, right?
Yeah.
Will it be open to the public to come in, like U-Haul type, like haul your own products? Or your, that's main, okay. And then you might have some that will deliver, like you'll have maybe trucks that would deliver and things, okay.
And deliveries and stuff like that, yep.
I have a quick question. Elica, is there anything, and maybe I just didn't see this in the plans, but is there anything requiring them to kind of put up a fence or barriers? It's just.
There is, right now. But that can be part of the condition since it is the conditional use.
Okay.
And then the only comment I had for the staff report was just for the landscaping plan to be a little more detailed. But that's not a big deal. And to switch the 15 feet from, I think right now the 15 feet for the frontage is off of, I believe it's 2800. And I would just change it to 1900.
The lots that are there now are fronting on the.
Are fronting on there. I would say more so because 1900 is the busier road. But this is something we can talk about.
Any other comments or questions?
I think I'm thinking along the same lines as Andrew, just knowing what type of product may be in here that we require some sort of fence to be around the perimeter of the establishment. Not where the, like the rock or the wall, the concrete barriers should be where you'd stack stuff up, but just everywhere else where the yard would be open.
I was going to say, you know, people might steal some stuff if you don't have a fence.
Is there a specific type that you guys were thinking about? Or just as long as they have something there?
I wouldn't think it needs to be anything more than just like a chain link. It, I would see it as a twofold. One, to secure his property, but the other would be if he's going to be doing like bark or anything like that, maybe to decrease the amount of blow away or stuff like that.
Alright, I'm ready for a motion if someone would like to give one.
I motion to approve the landscape retail yard located approximately 2797 South 1900 West, parcel 154660006. Might have put too many zeros in there, but.
Can I have a motion? Can I get a second?
Conditions.
Did we have a condition as far as the fencing?
And the conditional use.
For the.
You can take back the.
I won't retract that motion until I get this figured out. My apologies.
Okay. And is, so is it site plan approval or conditional use?
It's both.
Both, okay.
Yeah, we've had a few of those like that that are conditional and site plan.
Okay.
Okay, so we.
Matt, do you want to make that motion or do you want someone else to make it?
It's easier to say second.
I can make a motion. I motion to grant preliminary site plan and conditional use approval for Greystone Products located at approximately 2797 South 1900 West, parcel 15-46-ish, 6-0006, and parcel 15-46-ish, 6-0005, with the conditions that the landscape on the site needs to be updated to switch the 15 foot from the side facing 2800 South to 1900 South, and that there be some sort of barrier or fence put around the perimeter of the establishment.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Hey, we haven't finished this yet. I'm reading, I'm reading the ones, on the agenda, it just lists the one parcel, but on the application, it lists two.
No, the motion was correct.
Was correct, okay. It just has one on the agenda, but there is two on the site plan application. So he did mention both of those, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Yeah, we had a motion by Commissioner Hepworth and a second by Commissioner Nice. And voting was all in favor. We'll do it one more time just to make sure we get them all. Are we good? Okay.
Okay.
Alright, motion passes, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, agenda item number six will be entering into a public hearing. And for those of you that aren't familiar with the public hearing, there's rules on the back of the agenda that just kind of explain how a public hearing works. It gives the opportunity for those in the public that would like to step up to the microphone. You just need to introduce yourself, your name, your address. We do limit it, make sure we did change this in our rules that it was, does it say two minutes?
That was from our previous chair.
Okay.
So now you get to set whatever time limit.
Okay. I think the two minutes is acceptable. And so if you have, kind of gather your thoughts and collect them so that we can hear what your concerns are and express yourself in an orderly manner. And so, and then when we're out of public hearing, we don't allow public comment. We have some discussion within ourselves and the applicant. So with that being said, we will enter public hearing if I can get a motion.
I would move to enter public hearing regarding accessory building ordinance. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to enter public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Alright, all in favor? We are now in public hearing. So any member of the public, either online or here in the audience, if they would like to step up and give any feedback or comments on this particular agenda item.
We have you guys go over what the accessory building ordinance is so we are more educated.
Yeah, we can do that. Yeah, let me, I can go over it right now.
Not now or go out of the background?
Yeah, I can do that right now. We can still stay in public hearing.
That's what I was, I mentioned to read it.
So the main point of this ordinance amendment is to change the setbacks as of right now, or to consider changing the setbacks. Right now, any lot that's over 12,500 square feet has to have the setback of 10 feet from the back and from the side. And so the request now is to try to change it to be five feet and have that discussion. Other things to consider is all accessory buildings can only take up 25% of your rear yard. I do recognize that there are some lots in the city that maybe don't have that big of a rear yard, but have a bigger side yard. So I'm extending it to that and talking over the percentage for that cover. And really the main one is I'm changing the accessory building to say accessory structures, just because structures covers more things like pools and courts. As of right now, and this will be a discussion after the public comment, but I have it in here that pools and sports courts would be exempt from that area cover, but would still have to comply with the setbacks. Another thing to consider is, as of right now, accessory buildings are not allowed in the front plane. So they have to be five feet behind the front plane of the house, so that like foundation wall. And I'm considering allowing them to be, to follow whatever front setback of whatever zone they're in. And typically that's about 30 feet. So maybe the house is back, I don't know, 100 feet because the lot is deep. And we're discussing possibly allowing that accessory structure to be maybe the 30 feet or whatever that front setback would be. Let's see. And then right now, if you have a corner lot, you have to follow whatever that side setback is for the primary dwelling of whatever zone you're in. And typically that's about 20 feet. And so the proposal is that if you're a corner lot, you can be 10 feet from the property line if you don't have access to that adjacent street. But if you do have access, then you would have to be that 20 feet. Another point to discuss today is detached carports. I'm recommending it be maybe three feet from the property line. And that's something we'll discuss after the fact. And only if they can be moved if need be. And then the last thing is just to make, to be clear that all accessory structures have to keep the roof line within whatever property they're on. And so there's no water trespassing onto your neighbor's property. Yeah, those are the main points we're going to discuss tonight. So any comments, concerns, anything like that, guys are welcome to come up.
My name is Jeff Nelson. I live at 4536 West 4200 South here in West Haven. And I go through a lot of people's properties with my business in the city. And I think it's a little bit crazy that they have the setback of 10 feet from the side and the back because nobody's, I mean, I can't say nobody, but I see a ton, a lot of properties that are already five feet or less. They're all big structures that I know that people had building permits. It's not a little tiny shed that they put out there, which I see those right on the property line all day, every day. But if you step outside, you can see standing on the city grounds or structures that would violate that 10 feet right now. I need all of my ground, you know, I can't, I want to build a shop at my house and to have that extra five feet would be a significant difference for me. I see a lot of the properties that they have that little section next to their building, and it's just full of weeds and debris and just a huge catch-all. And I think that if it's 10 feet, it's just going to be way worse than if you go to five. So I am in total support to make that smaller and just go along with what you obviously have already been doing. Because like, say, I see them all day, every day, all over the place, and I can provide a lot of different addresses for properties that are already at five feet or less. So that's all I've got.
For the record, what's your business?
I do lawn care, J and L Lons. So I go fertilize and aerate and whatever, all over the place. So I look over the fences and especially since I heard about the 10 feet, I'm like, that one's in violation, that one's in violation. I see them every day. So there you go. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Dan Shear. I live at 4721 South 4500 West here in West Haven. And I am in absolute favor of changing the 10-foot down to a 5-foot as well. I have a unique situation. My lot is wide and not deep. And I have an acre of ground there. And the problem I have is, is that I, a couple of things that the changes are looking to make is that, for example, because my lot is wide and narrow, the setback, if I had to build my, I'm looking to build a structure next to my home. And if I had to build that five feet behind the front portion of my home, that would really limit me a lot. And I would rather be able to just do the typical setback requirements. That would help me tremendously. If I had a deep lot, different story altogether, but I don't. Also, the 5-foot section, you know, the 5-foot distance to the property line would be very helpful for me as well because, again, building this structure would provide the width of my lot that I have that allows me to use that width and be able to build the structure that I'm looking to build. I would take into consideration, of course, any slough off of the roof that would potentially go into a neighbor's yard. My neighbor that I'm looking, where I'm looking to build already has a structure, a barn, right next to the property line. It's within five feet, easy. And I wouldn't have any issues, there wouldn't be any issues with slough off of that being right, you know, five feet away from him. So again, I'm in full support of the changes that are being recommended here in the proposals. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone online that you noticed? Just those two, okay. We won't look for someone raising their hand online then, so.
Is it alright if I ask you a question?
Yes, go ahead.
So Elica, I know my, my outbuilding on my property, when we permitted it, that was probably about 12 years ago. We were able to do three feet off the property line. What, what, why did it change to the 10-foot? Just to kind of help us see some historical context to it. Because I know there is, the first gentleman pointed out that there are structures outside of what it currently is, but I know that it was done, permitted, but there was different ways. Why do we keep going back and forth?
So what I got from that? You want me to explain the 10 versus the five or the three that was before?
Well, just sorry, I stepped out of the lot area. So mainly the question is, is why, or why does this ordinance seem like it keeps going back and forth? Because when I permitted my outbuilding 10 or 12 years ago, I was able to go three feet.
Yeah.
I was aware since then that it changed to 10 feet, and now we're talking about going back to five feet. So what is, what's causing the change?
Yeah, so before, it was kind of dependent on zone. So the majority of the zones had, were allowing accessory structures to be five feet. And I believe one or two were allowing it to be three feet. This ordinance was changed back in September of 2022. And the main reason for that was to just take, to take the zoning out of it and have it all together in one place. So we wouldn't have people looking in different areas. It was all under one umbrella. If I recall correctly, when it came through planning commission, the recommendation was to have them all be at five feet. And then when I went to city council, there was some back and forth about public utility easements, which typically are 10 feet and most lots have. And so that was, there was that whole conversation about encroaching on that easement. There was some concern about fire. And so that's why they kind of settled on, well, maybe the bigger the lot, the easier it would be to provide that 10 feet. And so anything under 12,500 square feet would stay as five. About a month or so ago, we had a resident come to city council and basically was asking to have us review this ordinance to try to reduce the setbacks. And so I was directed to look into this again. And I will say, there have been other residents that aren't too keen on the 10 feet and honestly, I don't blame them. So that's why it's being revisited again.
Thank you.
That's a great, perfect explanation. Thank you.
Alright, any other comments during public hearing? Go ahead.
I'm Dan Beatty. I live at 3624 South 3050 West, West Haven. Based on the 10 feet being a, based on the PUE, well, by moving stuff 10 feet off of a property line, you're giving 20 feet, not 10 feet. Because you're not going to take 10 feet out of one property for the PUE. It's going to go down the property line and you're going to have five from each person. So the misconception of this, I mean, it don't affect me in anything. I'm just sitting here as a resident. And, but the misconception of that is that it's going to be 10 feet out of one person's property. That's not how it's going to work. It's going to come five out of both sides. So my opinion is move it back to three. But five, great. 10 seems kind of crazy along his lines. It's a junk hole. And when you live next to the people that have a junk hole for 10 feet, you'd rather just have it for five. So, thank you.
Yeah.
Alright, thank you. Alright, any other comments in public hearing before we leave?
Move to exit public hearing. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to leave public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Dustin, did you?
Yes, I said aye, but that's the same time Andrew did.
Okay, great, great, okay. Looks like, let's see, all in, so we're all in favor, so it looks like the motion passes. And, oh, we're out of, sorry, I got a little sidetracked. So we're out of public hearing. So now we'll have some comments and discussion. I think this has been really good. It's been good to see the public get involved. And this is how things change. This is really, it's really good to see this. I just like to make that on public record that I think it's a really good thing when the residents get informed and want to get involved. So that being said, after reading through the document and the changes that Elica made, kind of discussions, any questions or comments?
Yeah, should we go in order or unless you guys have specific questions?
We could just start at the top?
Most of the top is just kind of going through each zone and just changing the wording from buildings to structures.
So when you say structure, like it doesn't have to be a building. So the structure is indicating that it could be a sports court or a pool.
Right, yeah.
We add a definition of what this, we're talking about, like yeah, structure. That was examples.
I have that right at the top.
Yeah, yeah, I think I added it in the, okay. Well, it was supposed to be added to the staff report. But yeah, I can, we can add that to it.
With that though, I would like to weigh in that I would be opposed to limiting pools and sport courts as, as far as the size of, or the, sorry, that what it takes up in the backyard, the limit of space, but that it would be, it would be subject to the setbacks.
Yeah, and we'll discuss that a little bit. But yeah, basically, a structure is anything that takes, has location on the ground. It doesn't necessarily have to be permanent. It could be attached to something else, like the main dwelling. But it just kind of brings in everything so that pools and courts are included in that definition. But to this point, I'm talking about that percentage. I did have in here that pools and sport courts are exempt from that area cover requirement. So right now, we have that you can only take up 25% of your backyard or your side yard. And if you are going to put structures in either the side or the back, that altogether you can take up 40%. But no matter what, pools and sport, sport courts are exempt from that percentage. Thoughts on that?
I'm sorry, did you say they are exempt?
They are exempt, yeah.
So you can take up a whole acre of pickleball courts on your property?
Yeah, as long as you.
Kind of broad.
Given our current water situation, I don't think that's a horrible idea.
Sorry, Dustin, we didn't catch that comment.
I was saying, given our current water situation, I don't think that's a horrible idea.
Or what are, what are your thoughts for the wording? Since you think that's.
I don't know, I just didn't think it was going to be able to be so broad for somebody's sport, sports courts or swimming pools and stuff like that. Just seems a little large.
I don't see as a problem. I think it's a good idea because the courts and the pool are a level surface. You're not having, you're not having a structure, an outstanding structure, right? But that, that's where displaced water, everything's going to still be on that little, little plane, I believe, right?
Yeah, I was thinking more about how happy your neighbors would be with sport courts.
I know, that gets me too.
I can't say that, forget it. I don't know.
I don't know that it matters what your neighbors think about how many sport courts you want to have on your property. If you want to play sports all day.
You don't have neighbors, huh?
I do have neighbors.
I do.
Do you mean because of like noise or?
See, that's.
Or like a aesthetic from the aesthetic?
Well, no, no, I don't care about the aesthetics if it's in your backyard.
Well, they still have to abide by noise and nuisance. Well, they still have to abide by noise and nuisance and all that stuff.
Noise, lighting.
Yeah, everything, yeah, lighting is a whole other ordinance that they have to abide by too and.
No, I know, I I understand it, I just don't necessarily agree with it.
They can play pickleball in the dark. Glow-in-the-dark pickleball.
There you go. I like that. But yes, I do think we need to define what structure is.
I can add those definitions.
How are you guys feeling about the setbacks? Is there any?
No, the setbacks.
Opposition to the setbacks going to five feet?
Five feet's good.
I've got a couple of questions. Uh, first of all, I'm, I'm really in favor of the five feet thing. But as long as this ordinance is opened up, then I've got a couple of other questions. So on page, well, it's on page twenty-eight of the packet. It's um bracket B, right under the rear setback. And I'm not really certain if that is only referring to the rear setbacks or if it's referring to all of the setbacks.
So it's referring to the side setback, so if.
B is referring to the side setback? I thought that was, I mean, it's below B.
Right, so.
I mean, below uh the rear setbacks.
Well, it was, it's below that table.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just a continuation of that table where it outlines the height, the front, the side, and the rear.
Okay, because I guess here, here's my real question, and I'm not sure if this captures it. I think that from a corner, it should be, there should be twenty feet from the corners that's not blocked from view. And and unless I read this wrong, this would allow
Ten feet.
Um, something to be put ten feet from the corner.
You mean from the front corner?
Yes.
No, so this is to, from the side. So, I wish I had a whiteboard right now. No, nothing can go, and I believe we have it on here, um.
I mean, if if it's clear that this is from the side, then then you're a hundred percent right, but I, I didn't see where it referenced this to the side.
So the last sentence of that says accessory structures are only permitted five feet behind the front plane of the house for corner lots. So they will never be in that corner.
Okay, then you have addressed that one. Thank you. I've asked Alaka a lot of questions.
Which is fine, no worries.
Since, since we're right there.
Yeah.
There's no A. It starts with B.
Uh, well, the A is the, that's how it is right now. It's implied that the A is the, the chart, but yes, I'll, I'll make sure that's clear.
I saw that, but, okay, so I have one, one other question. Um, as was mentioned.
Yeah.
If you go around and look, I, I have a three-mile drive from where I get off the train to go home. And as I got um off there and and drove home tonight, I counted, I stopped counting at a dozen sheds that are closer than five feet to the property line. And most of these are not like big, they're not like small barn sheds. They're like lifetime sheds or a shed you get from Lowe's or something like that.
Yeah.
And and almost all of those are like on the property line.
Yes.
I don't want to get anyone in trouble, like I don't want to, you know, go out and say, here's the addresses. But I'd kind of like to see the ordinance endorse what everybody thinks you can always already do in terms of those small sheds. I looked at some other cities and they have um a, a structure under two hundred square feet would be exempt from these setback requirements. So I just wanted to throw that out there and see what y'all think, because, you know, like has already been mentioned, there's dozens and dozens of these.
So I think the main reason for that, and we're never going to go out, the only way we would know is if your neighbor rats you out, really. But, and basically, anything over two hundred square feet, you need to get a building permit. And so obviously, we would check and have you comply with those, whatever setbacks it ends up being, right? Whether it's the three, the five, the ten, whatever. So what I'm assuming is happening is these sheds are under two hundred square feet.
Right.
And so a building permit isn't acquired. Now, you're still supposed to comply with the setbacks, but probably in their mind is who's checking? And so that's why it's closer.
It's ever even occurred to them, because like has been said, if you have it three feet or five feet, that's going to be a weed patch back there, but.
Yeah, and I think, I was speaking to the building department earlier and kind of going over that code. Um, to my understanding, five feet is the minimum that you don't need a fire, one-hour fire-rated wall. So are we going to go check that with anything under two hundred feet? No, we're not going to go out of our way. But if someone calls in and says, hey, my neighbor has a shed that's right up against the fence.
That's less than two hundred feet?
That, yeah, it doesn't matter at that point, because they still have to comply. No matter how, what size the shed is, they have to comply. The only difference is we're not checking if it's under the two hundred feet, unless we get a call. Then our code enforcer goes out and says, hey, you have to comply with the, whatever setback we have. And it must be moved.
So I understand that that's the way it is, and I was just wondering what the rest of the planning commission would think about exempting
Two hundred feet and lower.
Um, yes, small sheds, and I'm, like, in one of the places in the code, not in, not in this ordinance, but in another place, it talks about, well, even in here, like where it talks about carports that could be moved. Um, what if you made a similar type of an exemption for a small shed under two hundred square feet that could be moved?
Yeah, I guess my only concern would be the fire-rated wall.
It does come, I guess, like, does composite and resin, like a lifetime shed, will that combust and catch on fire and cause a, a fire will just melt?
And I mean, that's more a question for a building official. He's the one that would be checking.
Because I can understand, like a tough shed, you don't want that to catch on fire, and it might be easily demountable, but also poses more of a fire risk, I think, than like a resin or composite shed.
So I can speak a little bit to that in, in the sense that it's not necessarily that your shed is going to, if your shed is on fire, it has to withstand an hour, but if you've got two sheds right up against the property line, that maybe the plastic ones on one side, the wood ones on the other, wood one catches fire, almost definitely that plastic one's catching fire immediately. The one-hour fire rating is, is there to provide the fire department enough time to get there so that the adjourn, adjourning structures don't catch fire. I would be really weary personally to to exempt those sheds just for the fire rating alone. But that's my personal opinion.
Good point, thank you.
I have a question, Alaka. So, is so like, is an RV pad considered a structure?
An RV pad, so just.
It's a carport, isn't it?
Yeah, it would be.
Considered a carport.
Yeah, and so that's why I put that extra line of carports, because if that wasn't in there, then yeah, they would have to comply.
What about a dog run? I'm just thinking, I would rather have a pickleball court than a dog run right next to my property. So is that just depending if it's a temporary structure or if it's got like a cement pad and it's?
Well, cement can go up to the property line. No matter what, so really, truly, if they wanted to put all cement, they could. Because we're not going to go back there and check, you know, for the rear yard and the landscaping there. Yeah, I mean, under the structure definition, it'd be anything. Anything that takes location on the ground. Um, the only reason I put something in here for a carport is to me, that's kind of an extension of, like a garage, like with them parking next to it. So I wanted to kind of give them a little bit more of a leeway there, but open to whatever discussion. That's why I kind of shaved off that two feet and kind of just went to the three, because typically carports, carports are not all closed off, and well, I guess it just depends on the carport, too. It wouldn't be so hard to move if need be. If there, if there is a P U E right next to, like on the side. I'm assuming most people are going to tie it down so it doesn't blow away, but I don't think it'd be so hard to move if a utility company needed to get through. But any thoughts on that?
I don't see an issue with it.
And I would just, I guess I, the only thing I would add is that if they're open on all sides, because the second they close off three of the sides, I would consider it, like they would have to comply with that five feet.
Or two sides.
Yeah, or the two sides.
I would also make, mention that maybe we, we uh limit the the building material, because, yeah, if it's a metal carport or aluminum one, it's one thing, but someone wants to frame a carport with some wood, that brings the fire rating into question again.
But the carport would have to be open on two sides, did you say?
Yeah, we're on the three, I guess, because they can only have one side covered, I would say.
So that probably would infringe on the property, like for a fire, if it is open? Am I hearing that right?
Well, I don't know, I guess I'm, well, I don't know.
At some point, if you uh, at some point, if you enclose your carport too much, it becomes a garage.
And that's kind of where my mind goes with that. But.
Kind of have to define
Right.
what that is a little bit better. To go back to pools and sport coats or scorts. Somebody, some, somebody help me say that, would you please?
You can just say court.
Well, yeah, let's go with court. They're, they are exempt, except they have to be in the rear yard. But in that gentleman's case, his
On the side.
Yard is, so it can be on the side, though, or is it going to be a condition for him to come in and request to be able to put in a swimming pool on the side of his house?
I mean, because just allow it to be on the side, as long, we can just allow it to be on the side if you want.
Well, I'm not saying in every case, I'm just saying, you know, somebody who has a, their house is way back on their lot and it's not a deep lot. Can they still have a swimming pool? Or a court taking up the entire lot?
Is there an ordinance for having swimming pools behind a fence?
We don't have one, no.
You don't? Should that be added to this?
We can add it to this, yeah. I think the building um code does require them to have some sort of fencing.
Fence around a sport court or a, or a pool.
Yeah, more so a pool. The courts I would have to check on, but we can, that doesn't mean we can't add something to this.
Okay.
So we can. You were thinking to add some sort of fencing around a pool and a court?
Right.
I think that's a good idea.
Everybody doesn't upset the neighbors too much.
Hope you add a little bit.
Pickleball's been rolling over, right?
But going back to what you were saying, though, are we okay with allowing a pool or a court on the side?
If it's behind a fence.
Yeah, I'm okay with it.
Yeah.
Well, is that something we should build into the ordinance, or is that something we can handle when somebody comes in to pull a permit for the swimming pool, assuming they come in to pull a permit?
Well, we have to be careful. I, I want things to be uniform. I don't want it to seem like, oh, you said this person's okay, but I, it's not okay for me to do it. I want to avoid that.
So I believe we should put it in this.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know how, though. Got some good ideas on that.
I'm not sure, I mean, this is a, an, an ordinance about, um,
Setbacks and structures.
About setbacks.
And we're, we're defining it, we're defining the, the pools and the courts as a structure.
We're redefining building structures, so.
Yeah, because, and I guess it's a little history. When I first started here, that's what I was directed at, to look at pools and courts as accessory, well, buildings.
Okay.
And so I just thought it was a little, it wasn't clear for people, right? And some would say, well, previous staff would say that didn't count, and now this one's saying it does count. And so I just want to make sure that either way, we're all on the same page.
You could call these ground-level structures such as pools and courts.
Yeah.
Will need to be behind a fence.
Yeah, we can say that.
I like that. I like the way you put that.
So where would you put that? Where would you put that into them?
I would put it in that area.
Area of accessory?
Yeah.
Fifth, one, five, seven, six, oh, one?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I would put an A and B.
Yeah, right there.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Okay, and then how do we feel about the front setback? Because right now, they have to be five feet behind the front plane of the house. Now, that still stays for corner lots, just because of that line of sight. But right now, I'm proposing that they follow whatever the front setback is for that zone. You okay with that? Any questions on that, concerns for that? And the main reason for that is, I'm thinking, and there's not that many in the city, not that I've seen, if it's a deep lot and their house is a hundred feet from the road, but they want to have, I don't know, like a greenhouse or something, because maybe they have a garden there. I think it should be okay for them to have it there within that thirty feet or whatever that front setback is.
Within the thirty feet?
Or, yeah, whatever that front setback would be for that zone, for a main dwelling. Typically, it's about thirty feet.
All right, any other questions? Still working through it? Do you guys feel like we have enough to vote on it tonight, or do you need more time?
Yeah, you can always sample it.
I think, how many corrections do you have to make?
So it's basically that part B for the pools and sport courts.
Right.
It's that one, and then just clarifying the carports.
Yeah, I think we should probably table, I'm thinking.
We could table that.
Yeah, and as a reminder, I mean, the, there won't be another city council meeting until May, anyway.
Okay.
That's not a bad idea. Do we want to, I know it talked about detached carports. What if somebody does kind of, you know, they do a carport off the house, like an attached?
Yeah, so we do have code for that. They can, the overhang can only go five feet into the side yard.
Okay.
And that's a different ordinance.
Okay, because I see sometimes those carports that they buy, those aluminum, look, that's, when I think of a detached, I think of something like that.
Yeah.
Not really great-looking, but that, but that's kind of what that, you may be leaning towards, something like that, maybe.
Yeah, that's on a touch of the house.
Well, we could do that and have her kind of clean up some of the things that we suggested and then revisit it at the next meeting. If you guys are in agreement.
Yes.
Yeah, if you guys are in agreement, I'll.
I do have one more question. What's the reasoning behind the only three feet for the temporary carports?
I just kind of wanted to give them a little bit extra room. That's really it. Because otherwise, it would just be the five feet, because they would, you know, be like a garage, like an extra little garage. But I'm open to whatever. Do you think it should be closer? And I guess also part of it, I did try to look at other cities ordinances. Not very many actually call out a carport, and the ones that did typically were about three feet from the property line. But that doesn't mean we can't allow a little bit more, since it's not going to be enclosed. If it is going to be enclosed, then no matter what, they have to be the five feet or whatever the setback ends up being. If it is gonna be enclosed, then no matter what, they have to be the five feet or whatever the setback ends up being.
Right, any other questions or discussion? I'll entertain a motion. So if we're ready.
Uh, motion we table. Motion we table the accessory building ordinance rewrite with corrections as noted.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of tabling?
Aye.
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 All right, um, it's unanimous, so motion carries to table item number eight. Oh, sorry, uh, number seven, sorry. Okay, so now moving on to agenda item number eight. Um, another public hearing to consider a request to rezone property located at approximately fifteen eighty-four west, twenty-one hundred south. From MU to C three, before they come up. Is there somebody here representing this, decide that's your item? Do you wanna, is there anything you wanna explain about this? Maybe give a little preface to?
Um, I think it's pretty straightforward. If he would like to come up and say something, he can.
Okay.
Before going into.
Right, oh, yes, well, before you come up, we'll open public hearing, thank you. Got ahead of myself, so if you don't think there's anything we need to discuss, and then before we go into public hearing, we'll just let him explain it.
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay, all right, I will entertain a motion.
I would move to enter public hearing to consider a rec, um, request to rezone property. Located at approximately fifteen eighty-four west, twenty-one hundred south. Parcel number one, five, zero, six, nine, zero, zero, eight, two, from MU to C three.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to enter public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are entering public hearing. Go ahead, Mr. Beatty. I guess you could introduce yourself, give us your address.
Yep, my name's Dan Beatty. I live at thirty-six, twenty-four, south, thirty-fifty, west, West Haven. Um, this piece of property I bought a few years ago. I came before planning commission. In order to figure out what we could, to make sure I could do it with a site plan a couple of years ago, needed to do some other stuff. This was before. Alaka worked here, um, it was a real struggle to get anybody to talk to you, so I just got on the docket to come talk to them, and they're like, yeah, move forward. So at that point, um, we moved forward with plans and everything that it takes to get it done. That's not exactly a. Super speedy process, and so at this point, then I come back in to get back on this, to get site plan approval. And with the maps and everything, get with Alaka, who actually was pretty amazing to deal with. Um, says, hey, this is where we're at, this is what we need to do, let's put it back on this and go forward. We are, we're on a private road, um, there's three businesses, we touched nothing. Um, yeah, it's, it's what the piece is for. We're right there against the freeway and the canal. The other canal, gardener, frontline, and yeah, so just looking to finish the road, but get everything done in there with. Our new office building and our new shop and everything.
Yeah, and I just wanna add one thing. Um, so, as you know, last year, um, our zoning map. Was updated to actually reflect ordinances that were passed, and so when he came in a couple of years ago, maybe? Two, three years ago, um, his property was already, was zoned, was showing as commercial. But because we went back and went through all the ordinances, it turns out that it's actually mixed use. So, yeah, and looking at the minutes for when he came in, the only reason. He was tabled, he wasn't even denied, he was tabled, was because he was just missing a couple of things. Um, so I don't, I don't see an issue with this being rezoned, and like the staff report says. Our general plan map has that showing up as C three anyway.
Thank you.
So we are in public hearing. I probably should have entered now, but we can do it. But we are in public hearing, so anybody else that wants to share something?
My name's Kellen Johnston. Uh, I'm with Frontline Concrete Pumping at nineteen ninety-seven, south, fifteen fifty, west, neighboring property. Um, we are for it, one hundred percent. It's gonna clean up the area, finish it off. We'll be able to finish. Uh, upgrading the road when he's in and cleaning it up. It'll, it'll, it'll finish it off for uh, people parking back there. There'll be more activity on that, on that, in that area, so for people that are passing through, not using it as a parking lot. The weeds will be gone. It's just been a lot that's been maintained. Very little, and Dan, Dan is here to clean it up. I think it's a good thing, so thank you.
Thank you.
What type of business is this?
Excavating.
Okay.
All right, we're still in public hearing. Any other comments? Anyone online, Robin yet?
Um, Blaine Willerton, uh, thirty-seven, forty-seven, Midland Drive. Um, the, that, he's gonna do a good job building what he wants to build on that piece of ground. I've seen the stuff he builds in the past. He does a good job, so.
Thank you.
All right, any other comments before we leave public hearing? Ready for a motion if we.
Make a motion to exit public hearing?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to leave public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we are out of public hearing. All right, any questions, comments?
To me, this is pretty straightforward.
Just kinda putting it back to where it.
But it's supposed to be.
What it's supposed to be.
Right.
Yeah, and I know you guys are aware, but just a reminder, um, he will have to come back for a site plan. Um, I just added the concept plan and of what he's wanting to do. I don't really think that's changing from what we have in there. Um, it's just that obviously he'll come back and do a formal site plan approval.
So this is strictly just the rezone?
Yeah, this is just a rezone, yeah.
Right now?
No. Yeah, it's like, I'm ready to go. Now it has to go to city council first.
Well, I'll make a motion, um, that I find that the request is consistent with the general plan, and accordingly. Motion that we forward this application to city council with the recommendation that they approve the application and rezone parcel. One, five, dash, zero, six, nine, dash, zero, zero, eight, two, one point four, three acres in total from MU to C two.
Second.
Right, did he say C two or C three? Okay.
I said C three.
Okay, sorry.
I still said.
No, you're good.
Okay, motion, I have a motion and a second by Mr. Nice. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, it's unanimous, so, and no nays, so no motion carries. So you're on to city council, and I guess you told them when the next meeting will be?
Yeah, so the second, typically the next city council is the third week. Um, it's been canceled, so it's, wouldn't be till the beginning of May, the first Wednesday in May, but we'll keep in contact.
May eighth, it'll be May eighth.
May first.
May first.
The first Wednesday in May.
Oh, is it? Well, that's right, seven from eight, yeah, you're good.
I'll make sure to give you the right date.
She'll give you the right date.
All right, thank you. So moving on to agenda item number ten.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, motion passes. We are adjourned, thank you.